It's now seven minutes after ten. This is a second forum call of this morning. We do have quite a few presentations this morning prior to proceeding with the agenda. So council members, this is your first forum call. It's now seven minutes after ten. This is a second forum call of this morning. We do have quite a few presentations this morning, colleagues. So if council members could please report to the council chambers so we can begin the presentations and the meeting, that would be very much appreciated. Colleagues, this is a second forum call. We have five members present. This is a third forum call for the city council. We do have eight members present. Two or three quorum. If council members would please report to the council chambers who would like to begin the meeting. This is a third forum call. Good morning, everyone. I'm in order. We are still awaiting a quorum. And we will call the role once a quorum is obtained. But to begin, I'm Councilman Rudy Savornich Junior, Assistant President Pro Tem, serving as presiding officer today due to the excused absences of Council President Ferraro and Council President Pro Tem Ruth Galanter. There are fifteen council districts in the city and we are presently being viewed on L.A. City View Channel Thirty-Five live. The meeting will be repeated this evening beginning at seven thirty. And all council meetings for the week will be replayed beginning on Sunday at ten o'clock in the morning. We do have some presentations this morning by council members prior to going into the regular council agenda. And then we will also have a special council meeting today following the conclusion of the regular agenda. So this morning, to begin presentations, the chair would like to recognize Councilman Ridley Thomas for a presentation. Councilman Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, it's a great pleasure that I invite each of you to join me in a very special birthday celebration. Many of you will recognize and know this because of your own experiences as children, for those of us who choose to think back that far, and those who still have the urge to celebrate by acknowledging the seventieth birthday of the Hostess Twinkie. You will take note of the gifts that are on your respective desk. And the persons here representing Hostess are both Jim Duffy, who is Operations Manager for the facility here in our city, and Guy Fisher, who is the Marketing Director. Most of us, and I would venture to say that all of us at one time or another, we will have had the opportunity to enjoy this product. Some of us may even be enjoying them now. And what you may not know is that Hostess has been baking, baking the Twinkie and its many other snack cakes here in Los Angeles in the Eighth Council District for very, very many years. By way of a bit of history, Hostess opened the doors to its facility in what we know as the Chesterfield Square Community in nineteen forty-seven. That's right, over a half-century ago. In this bakery in South Los Angeles, Hostess has been making these products for all of Southern California, Arizona, and Las Vegas, Nevada. Some nine-hundred-and-twenty-one people are employed at this facility. And literally, a half-billion Twinkies are made each year out of this particular operation. Now, for those who are even more interested in the history of this product, those who are connoisseurs of such delights, you will wish to know that the Twinkie was invented by Jimmy Duar in nineteen thirty after he saw a need for a low-priced product during the Depression. Mr. Duar once said that Twinkies was the best darn-tootin' idea I ever had. The Twinkie has not changed much since that introduction. And during the nineteen forties, the vanilla-flavored cream filling, Mr. Butcher, was chosen, replacing the original banana. Now, Mr. Savornich knows all these things in exquisite detail, so anyone needing to have a resident expert on the subject matter, please post up at CD fifteen. In nineteen ninety-nine, Hostess reintroduced that classic banana cream filling. The Hostess Twinkie has become somewhat of an icon in our culture. In nineteen ninety-nine, it was chosen to be included in the nation's Millennium Time Capsule, representing, quote, "an object of enduring American symbolism." In fact, you might say that the Twinkie hasn't enjoyed the kind of popularity that many of those who aspire to political office and hold political office would like to enjoy. Please join me then in celebrating this special day, the seventieth birthday, and recognizing the pleasure of having this corporate entity in our city, in our community, providing jobs and generations of delight to many and those of us who consider ourselves yet still young. Mr. President, members of the council, I would like, on behalf of the entire city council and the city at large, to present to these gentlemen both Jim Duffy and Guy Fisher, this certificate, this resolution. And it is by adoption here that the Los Angeles City Council is pleased, gentlemen, to congratulate the Twinkie on its seventieth anniversary as Americans' favorite snack cake and extend best wishes for your continued success, which means more economic development, more jobs, more bright lights in the city of Los Angeles.
We would just like to say, on behalf of the nine-hundred employees there at Hostess Bakery, we appreciate the time and the effort that went into this resolution and the recognition that you have given us today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Next, the chair would like to recognize Councilwoman Goldberg for two presentations. Okay, Councilwoman Goldberg is on her way. Mr. Padilla, are you prepared with your presentation? Okay, the chair would like to recognize Councilman Padilla for a presentation, followed by Councilwoman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I am joined today by various members of the Department of Public Works and the Bureau of Sanitation. And it's always a challenge to make these presentations and to present certificates and awards, and it's always tougher when the person you want to present to doesn't want to be here. And I say that somewhat in jest because today we're honoring Mr. Charles Pye from the Bureau of Sanitation, who works in the East Valley District. And the reason I say I don't think he wants to be here is because I know the love of his job is so great that he'd rather be out there getting his work done. And his work history has shown that to be the case. He's going to be retiring soon, and the city's going to be missing him quite a bit. And given his exemplary service to the city, the way in which he does his job, and the attitude that he brings to his work and to his peers is so commendable, we wanted to recognize him today. And I have to admit, I was urged a whole lot to do so, more than any lobbyist can ever do, by his own supervisors. And I think that speaks miles and miles of the kind of man that Charles is. He actually makes his home in Victorville, which is well over an hour away from his work site. And even though he lives in Victorville, and even though his work shift starts at six o'clock, he is at the work site every day by three o'clock. And he's the one that opens the gates, he's the one that gets the offices going, he's the one that gets his supervisor's paperwork in order before the day begins. And he's usually the first one to hit his route, and more often than anybody else, he's the first one to finish his route at the end of every day. And if that alone wasn't enough, let me tell you what his friends know Charles to be. They know he lives an hour away, they know he's there two hours before anybody else, and they know he's almost always one of the first ones to finish his own route. But as we know, sanitation trucks sometimes break down. And when one of his peers, one of the other drivers, are in need, they call upon Charles, and Charles never says no. He's out there to help his friends, he's out there to help his colleagues to finish their route, to bring them home, bring those trucks home, and get the job done. In his years and years with the city, which started in nineteen sixty-seven as a maintenance laborer and moved on in nineteen seventy-three as a refuse collection truck operator, to this day, he's already been commended by supervisors in the department. He's got two form, what we know as Form Seventy-Nines, which are the commendations that go into the personnel file. And as his retirement approaches, we wanted to recognize him here as a city council and also acknowledge that he's a member of the Eight Hundred Club, which is a testament to his attendance and consistency to his job. And I want to give his supervisor an opportunity to speak, but we do have this certificate on behalf of the council presented to Charles Pye on the occasion of your retirement after thirty-three years of service to the city of Los Angeles. And on behalf of the council and all the residents out there who see you drive by once a week and just get the job done, we want to say thank you.
I just want to speak for the, a little bit for the yard. Charlie leaving is definitely going to be leaving a big hole in the East Valley District because he's been basically an icon there. We can always count on Charlie to be there every morning. And if we came and the doors were locked, it's kind of a little bit of a disappointment because we knew that that meant Charlie was off that day. But Charlie's been definitely somebody that you could count on, and he's definitely developed a reputation within the yard of being someone who just cannot be replaced. Thank you.
I just want to say I thank you, and I appreciate everything that everybody's done for me. It's been a joy working in East Valley. It's kind of sad leaving, but I think it's my time to go. And I want to thank you for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Padilla. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg for two presentations. Councilwoman?
We have the folks here from Los Angeles World Airport's Construction and Maintenance Bureau. The program we're going to talk about today is the LAX Taxi Way and Taxi Lane Construction Efficiency Improvement. And say that three times quickly. As you all know, I'm sure that LAX supports more than sixty-one million passengers annually and is the second busiest airport worldwide in cargo transport. The heaviest aircraft weigh more than eight-hundred-thousand pounds. And with all this weight supported through the aircraft's landing gear, this concentrated weight places stress on asphalt, requiring frequent and recurring asphalt repair. This new method of removing old asphalt reduces equipment usage by eighty percent, requires two-thirds less personnel, and completes the job seventy-five percent faster and saves the city seventy thousand dollars annually. But even probably more important, it's very customer-friendly because when those terminals and ground movement of aircraft are affected, all of us who fly and all who are involved in the airline industry find the delays difficult. So this is the project that Productivity Improvement Award winner for today, so could we see the tape and get some ideas?
The Los Angeles International Airport, one of four airports in the Los Angeles World Airport system, is one of the premier air terminals in the world. With its four parallel runways and nine passenger terminals, the LAX team supports more than 61 million passengers each year and is the second busiest airport worldwide in cargo transport. Some of the largest aircraft may weigh more than 800,000 pounds, with the entire weight supported through the aircraft's landing gear. This places a great deal of concentrated weight on the asphalt of the terminal and taxiway areas, making it necessary to repair or reconstruct these areas with new asphalt. Repairs, unfortunately, are time-consuming and hinder movement of aircraft to and from their terminals. This repair process historically required a large team and several pieces of heavy-duty earth-moving equipment. However, a member of the LAX team, who had previous experience with the Bureau of Street Services, noticed that the reconstruction process might be made more efficient with a device called a cold planer. The LAX team tested the cold planer's ability to support the excavation and compaction process and determined that it could be used effectively to achieve the necessary depth and grade of cut required to support LAX asphalt repairs. This adaptation of a cold planer into the LAX asphalt reconstruction process resulted in an 80% reduction in equipment usage, a 66% reduction in personnel, and a 75% reduction in time needed to complete the job. These improvements result in less passenger delays at the terminals, improved movement of ground traffic at the airport during construction, many calls and letters of appreciation from the airlines supported at LAX, and savings to the city of over $70,000 annually. Congratulations to the Los Angeles World Airport's Construction and Maintenance Bureau for this innovative, customer-friendly program.
So imagine doing a job in one-fourth the time you used to be able to do it. That's what they've accomplished, and so let me introduce Ralph Maronis and Bob Rigney.
I'd just like to thank the council for this recognition, and on behalf of 800 construction and maintenance employees, we accept this in their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, we thank Mr. Philip Hill, the Executive Director and Commissioner Laverne Tucker, who is here every single time. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Walters for a presentation. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a presentation this morning for the American Cancer Society. And accepting the presentation is Leah Lewis, who is representing the Cancer Society, the Central Los Angeles Unit. Also, accepting with Ms. Powell, Ms. Lewis, not Ms. Powell, is Kathy Powell. Kathy Powell is a resident of the 9th Council District. He has been extremely active in our district, and we certainly look to him for guidance and counsel and assistance with all of the initiatives that we're trying to get through. Both he and his wife are active with the American Cancer Society and their volunteer units. Kathy has done numerous presentations in the community for prostate cancer awareness and is actively, as I indicated, involved in the 9th District. And let me tell you why this is important, for this to be highlighted here in the African-American community. Prostate cancer is the second-leading killer of African-American men. It is something that, because of lack of availability or access to medical assistance or the lack of understanding about the need for early awareness of the disease, that this occurs. In my own family, my grandfather, my father, and one of my father's two brothers all died with prostate cancer. The other, his remaining brother caught the symptoms in time and lived to 90 years old, was able to stave off that devastating disease. So this is a personal award as well as a community recognition for the work of Kathy Powell, Leah Lewis, of the American Cancer Society, focusing on the need for prostate health care and awareness in the African-American community with respect to prostate cancer.
Ms. Lewis and Mr. Powell.
Thank you very much. We appreciate just your outreach, your looking at this as an issue within the community, and without your support, we will, we would not be able to create the awareness that is necessary. The American Cancer Society would like to say thank you to the City Council and Rita Walters.
Good morning, everyone. I would just like to say I want to thank the Councilwoman, and I'm just happy to be a volunteer on this particular issue because it touched many men throughout the world, and it touches a lot of people in all of the communities. And I, what we can do is to educate and to inform and to be a part of that. I thank God that I'm able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And from the Chair, I do have an introduction. I would like to welcome the leadership class of Richard Henry Dana Junior High School from San Pedro, who are visiting the council chambers today. The leadership classes here. I would like to welcome the Dana Mariners, if they could stand and be greeted by the council. This is my alma mater, colleagues. I went to Dana Middle School many, many years ago, and I would like to welcome them here to the council chambers. In fact, they're on TV right now, and for any of you who have cable TV, you'll be on TV tonight at a little before 8:00. So welcome, Dana. Nice to see you here. Hopefully, in the future, one of you will be here, so that would be terrific. Welcome again, enjoy your stay. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum call the roll.
Bernson, Chick, Fur, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Wenich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, 10 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Again, this is a meeting of the City Council for this Friday, June 2nd. We have had all the announcements, but we do need to have the salute to the flag. Councilwoman Goldberg, would you please lead us in the flag salute? Would the audience please rise?
Please face the flag, place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
Okay, Madam Clerk, first item of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, so ordered.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Without objection, so ordered.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items to continue. Item number two, the applicant requests continuance to June 14th.
Is there any objection to continuing item number two until June 14th?
And also, Mr. President, there's a request to continue item number one, which is the mayor's veto message to Tuesday.
Okay. Seeing no objection, continuing item number two until June 14th. And is there any objection to continuing item number one until Tuesday? Okay, without objection, those two items so ordered.
Item number three, applicant requests continuance to June 7th.
Okay, without objection, so ordered.
Items 11 and 12, Councilmember Galanter has requested those be continued to June 16th.
Without objection, so ordered.
Item number 14, Councilmember Chick requests that be continued to Tuesday, June 6th.
Without objection, so ordered on number 14.
Next item, Mr. President, you have a confirmation of city official. Item number 21 is the permanent appointment of Margaret Wayland to the Personnel Department.
Ms. Wayland, if you could please come forward.
And, Mr. President, there's also two parts to this. There's a permanent appointment and also the salary consideration, so you may wish to take two votes.
Okay. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, Margaret Wayland.
Nice to see you here this morning. Is there any council colleagues that have any questions prior to our opening up the roll on this appointment? As Ms. Wayland is the permanent general manager of the Personnel Department, we will be taking two votes, as the clerk indicated. Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's open the roll on the appointment and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That item is approved. Now let us ask if there's any questions on part two, which is the...
Salary consideration.
Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on the salary and tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
That item is approved. Congratulations, ma'am, on your appointment.
Thank you very much.
Fourth with on that item. Next item.
Next items, items which public hearings have been held, items four through 13.
Okay, items four through 13, colleagues, are now before us. I have cards on number 13, so we will call item number 13 special. Is there any council colleagues that would like to speak on any items number four through 13, 13 being called special?
And 11 and 12 have already been acted on.
11 and 12 have been acted on, they have been continued, I believe. Okay? Nine special by Mr. Holden. Any other specials? Okay, so we have items number four through 13, 13 special, nine special, 11 and 12 being continued. Madam Clerk, would you open up the roll on the remaining items and tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
Those items are approved, fourth with on 10. Are there any other fourth widths? Okay, next items.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 14 through 24.
Colleagues, we do have items 14 through 24. We will hold number 24 on the desk in the anticipation of Mr. Bernson's arrival. Number 14 has been asked to be continued by Mrs. Chick. Are there any other specials? 18 called special, was that you, Ms. Goldberg?
Yes.
Okay. 15 and 16 called special by Mr. Holden. Anyone wish to speak on these items from the public? I do have... I do have a speaker's card on number 18, so why don't we call 18 special also? I believe it has been called special. Okay? Madam Clerk, what are the items remaining that have not been called special in this group?
Items 17, 19, 20, 22, 23.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on those items and tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items.
Next item, Mr. President, is the closed session. You do have a card on that item. Do you wish to have the public hearing now and then go into closed session later?
We could. We do have... In fact, we have a few cards on item number 25. Mr. Wax?
This is presenting a very serious problem. We... Item 25 is something that the city attorney has asked to go into closed session on, which has had absolutely no...
On the desk.
There has been absolutely no public awareness or knowledge of what it's about, no public participation in the process, the council members haven't been involved, and the community, which has been so involved with this airport for so long, I, I would like to... I want the people who are here to be able to speak. I'm amazed anyone got down here with this amount of notice. But I am going to ask that item 25 be done in open public session and that, and that we ultimately continue the matter until the community that is most affected by this has an opportunity to, to examine what is being proposed and give their input. You simply cannot take something that has been a public issue for so many years involving so many people, and then suddenly in closed session, behind closed doors, without any public involvement, have a settlement of a critical item like the impact of noise from the Burbank Airport. So I will ask that at the appropriate time, the people who are here have a chance to speak, but that the item be discussed in public and that it ultimately be continued until the communities affected have a chance to provide their input. Nobody has even seen this yet at this point. It's, it's a stunningly bad process of government.
Mr. Wax, we were going to proceed with item number 25, the public hearing, at this time, and that it is your request to continue item number 25?
I'd like, I, the point of it is, is that there has to be an opportunity for the, for the involved communities to know what's being presented and to discuss it among themselves and to provide input. The people who are here today won't be able to provide real input because they haven't seen it yet. It was just faxed, come to our office last night, none of the council members who have, Mr. Fur hasn't been involved, I haven't, none of us have been even involved. This has just sort of come out of the blue. So what I'm going to ask to do is, yes, the people need, should be heard if they've come down today, but what we also need to do is to have the proposed settlement made, be made public and then continued for a few weeks until all of the people and the concerned citizens dealing with airport noise for years have a chance to digest it, comment upon it, make recommendations, et cetera. We simply can't do this kind of thing behind closed doors, and we simply can't do it without public notice.
With your permission, Mr. Wax, why don't we request the city attorney's office to have any of the city attorneys that could make a presentation...
Mr. Pritzker, I believe, is the person...
Which they do believe would feel comfortable doing in open public, requested to come to the council. If they are not here already, they can make a presentation on what they believe they can, then we could have the individuals testify, and then if we need to continue it, we can do that based upon a motion from the floor. Ms. Weingart?
That's fine. Mr. Pritzker is on his way. There is a status conference next week. We will attempt, based on the council's decision to continue it, we will attempt to get a continuance on that.
When Mr. Pritzker arrives, why don't you inform the Chair, and then we'll take it up at that time, once the city attorney gets here. So why don't we just hold this on the desk a moment upon arrival of the city attorney? Madam Clerk, next item.
Item number nine called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, item number nine called special by you?
Yes, maybe Reckon Parks can explain why they, Department of Reckon Parks can explain why they are utilizing Mount Recreation and Conservation Authority issues to issue parking revenue in order to acquire funding.
Is there Reckon Park staff here to answer Mr. Holden's questions on item number nine? Okay, Madam Clerk, would you get ahold of Reckon Park staff, and we will hold this on the desk until Reckon Park staff arrives in order to answer Mr. Holden's questions? Would that suffice, Mr. Holden?
Fine.
Okay, let's hold item nine on the desk and request Reckon Park staff to come to the council chambers so they can answer that question. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item number 13, do you have a card on the item?
Okay, item number 13, we do have a few cards, and what I would like to do is call all four individuals, and if you could please line up in, in front of, and behind the speaker's podium, I would appreciate it. Craig Sherman, Rex Frankel, Marsh Holtzman, and Dale Neal, in that order. If you gentlemen could come forward... And go right ahead. If you could please take a minute each, we would appreciate this. This was heard in committee. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President and City Council. My name is Craig Sherman. I represent the appellant, Rex Frankel, and Coalition of Concerned Communities. This appeals about West Side traffic, your San Diego freeway nightmare. It's about enforcement of your specific plan, the coastal transportation corridor-specific plan. It's designed to create a fund to... It's designed to create a fund to deal with future and inevitable gridlock, and it's about the usurping of power by the mayor's office, which is unilaterally amended a development agreement which... Of an ordinance that was adopted by council. This case involves changing an office building development to a theater, restaurant, and shopping center. It's going to significantly shift the generation of traffic from a daytime use to that of an evening use, therefore pushing traffic issues and into later in the evening. These are citywide issues for which all council members here should take issue with. What this is about, in my representation of the client, is about the enforcement of the law. The coastal fees are mandatory, set forth in the plan. The council negotiated a development agreement with the city council back in 1985, and that needs to be enforced and cannot be changed by the mayor's office, but it needs to come before council. And on February 24th, that in fact was acted upon and changed by the mayor's office without consideration of council. My office has been asked to ask you to take a look at the law, process it, and result it as... And the result in this case is... Should be very different from how it has transpired. The record, the findings of staff actually indicate that the action at the mayor's office is taking... Directly in opposite.
Thank you, sir. Rex Frankel?
Thank you.
Followed by Marsh Holtzman, followed by Dale Neal.
Thank you. I'm Rex Frankel. I represent homeowners and residents in the area of this project and aggrieved taxpayers. The Hughes Center Development Agreement was created to bypass the density-cutting Proposition U, which voters passed overwhelmingly only weeks after the development agreement was approved by the city council in 1986. The development agreement specifically did not allow the landowner to be exempted from paying traffic-impact fees at the current rates, at 1999 rates, if they chose to later change the project, and which they did, from an office project to office and high-density retail. They gave up this right to transfer credits in order to be exempted from Proposition U, and Proposition U cut the density throughout the city of most commercially-zoned areas in half from what they were previously allowed. The Transportation Department's letter dated April 17, 1998, makes this point clearly, and the city council and the developer were fully aware of it at the time this project was approved in 1998. The intent of the 1986 development agreement was clear. The mayor's February 24, 2000 clarification of this development agreement, in secret along with the city attorney's office, is giving away $5 million that belongs to the public and us taxpayers. This revision to the 1986 development agreement must fully mitigate its traffic impacts and pay its fees and not be allowed to use credits from a previous, different project. It doesn't matter how much money they spent previously on a different project, the Transportation Department has said that they cannot use fees from a previous project. Protect the taxpayers. Support our appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frankel. Mr. Holtzman?
Good morning. My name is Marsh Holtzman, J.A. Snyder Company, 5757 Wilshire Boulevard, PH 30, Los Angeles, 90036. I really don't want to take up a lot of your time. All I would like to do is ask the council to uphold the findings of DOT staff, the general manager of DOT, and the Transportation Committee decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Dale Neal, Mr. Neal?
Mr. President, members of the city council, my name's Dale Neal. I'm with Latham &amp; Watkins. I'm here representing J.A. Snyder Company and Arden Realty Limited Partnership. I have a letter to submit for the record with an original for the clerk and a copy for each of the council members. I won't... It goes at length as to why the appeal should be denied. I'll just make two brief points. First, the appeal should be denied because it wasn't timely filed. It was filed almost three months after it should have been. Most importantly, though, the appeal should be denied because it lacks merit, and it lacks merit because the decision of the Department of Transportation, the general manager in this case, complied with the coastal transportation corridor specific plan and the Howard Hughes Center Development Agreement. And for those reasons, I would urge you to deny the appeal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Are there any council members that would like to speak on item number 13? Seeing none.
What did you say? I pushed my button.
Number 13, Mr. Holden? Okay, now I see it. Mr. Holden, go right ahead.
Mr. Frankel, Rex Frankel, will you come to the mic again, please? Just in maybe about 30 seconds, you tell me once again why you objected to J.A. Snyder's effort to provide whatever it's going to be, affordable housing. He may say one thing and do another, but go ahead, tell me.
Oh, no, they're building a 250,000-square-foot, high-intensity retail shopping center, and the project is a revision to a development agreement that they were previously given the right to build a high-intensity development. They paid traffic fees to mitigate that project, and then they decided to change the project. By changing the project, they are therefore outside of the development agreement, and they're required by the Department of Transportation to mitigate the newly-planned project, which totally changes the traffic rates and the times and the days. It changes it to nighttime impacts, which are severely important to the neighborhood that's immediately adjacent. And that's why the DOT has determined that there is $5 million in additional traffic fees, which should be mitigating this project, and the mayor's office and the city attorney have decided in secret to exempt them from paying that. And those fees could go a long way towards solving the traffic problems and the impacts that have been created and are being forced upon the surrounding neighborhoods, which have some of the most gridlocked traffic in the city. That's why we're appealing.
Well, your point's well made. I've done business with them before, in Marina.
Thank you.
Any other council member wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote?
Nine ayes, one no.
That item is approved. Fourth with? Fourth with on 22 also, at the request of Councilwoman Goldberg. Okay, next items?
Item 15 called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, item number 15.
Yes, on the excess business taxes that we accepted, and I was saying, how did the policy varies in a way where we collect more than we should be collecting, and I would like them... That's why I raised the question.
Mike Carey, the city clerk. In this particular instance, a field audit was done in the early '90s, and we classified...
Will you change the item on the board that we're discussing, please?
We classified this Princess Cruises under our highest tax rate, Section 21190, which carries with it a $5.91 per thousand of gross receipts tax rate. The taxpayer came back to us in subsequent years and submitted additional information. We went through another audit with the taxpayer, and based on that additional information, we in fact concluded that they should be taxed under two separate rates, one at $2.96 per thousand for certain of their activities, and the other under $4.18 per thousand, as I recall. And that led to this refund, and we kept the original claim open in order to resolve this as we went through the process.
So the money is still in a trust fund someplace?
Yeah, we still have the money. This would make the payment.
All right, fine. Then how much will we actually receiving with these two different tax brackets?
They were overpaid originally, I believe, somewhere in the neighborhood of $87,000 a year.
For how many years?
And we went back from '91 to '96.
They've been contesting this since 1991?
Not originally, because we concluded that they were at the higher rate, and then in subsequent years, we went back through a more formal audit and a hearing process, and everybody concluded that...
How much did we tax them per year?
Now?
Yes, even from '91 through '99, maybe it's nine years, I mean, which you're giving $260,000, I don't know, how are you...
The original claim was... Mr. Holden, I'm going to have to do some...
How much did they pay us? Yeah, how much did we...
I'm going to have to get that.
Would you just... Let's put this over until Tuesday, unless there's a need to do it today.
Mr. Clerk, is there a reason to do it today?
No. The taxpayer would like his money earlier than...
Yeah, but you know...
Are we having to pay interest on this? Yes.
So, Mr. Holden, five more days of interest?
Well, just go out and get the information. It's holding on to this. Because this is information that we really need to know, because if you're doing a cleanup, do a cleanup. You need to know why you're doing the cleanup.
Mr. Carey, would we be able to get the information if we held this on the desk for a few minutes?
No, we're going to have to go back into the audit file itself.
Bring the file out, that's no problem.
Right. No, I don't have the file here.
I mean, they could bring it over, maybe.
But not today. It's not located here, councilman, it's at Wilshire.
Well, the money is fixed, it's $260,000. It would not accrue anymore.
Mr. Holden is requesting a continuance on this item. Is there any objection to the continuance of this item until Tuesday? Seeing no objection, this item will be continued until Tuesday. And, Mr. Carey, if you could get the information for Mr. Holden by that time, it would be appreciated. Next item?
Item 16 called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, number 16.
I'm just curious as to trying to understand how the CAO arrived at a projection of the economic growth of 3.5%. Given that the economic circumstances could change, the forecast could change in the future as it has in the past, and then we've come up with a shortfall. And I think it's important that he provide for us this, and to the public, this information, given we've had a budget of about $4 billion, we just approve, close there too, and we may be looking at some more shortages, such as what we just voted for. How could you forecast that we have to give back $260,000, and that's going to go on and on and on and on? Did you include those factors?
When we put together our revenue forecast, we go through an extremely comprehensive process, and we look at a number of financial trends and indicators for over 150 different areas that are delineated in a budget. I have a copy, if anyone would like, it's Exhibit B of their budget, and we also have a revenue outlook book that... It's a separate schedule that we attach to our budget. Yes. As a consequence of our action, just to emphasize the degree of accuracy in that, the product of our approach, the prior year, we were within 1% of our revenue projection in terms of what we actually collected throughout the year. And so the accuracy and the thoroughness of our revenue projection process, I think, is extremely high, is exceptional. If you need information on the individual categories, as far as the general receipts and the actual... The various funds that we track, we'd be happy to come to your office and provide that information to you.
Well, you said within 1% you were...
Yes.
So you could either be... You estimate 3.5%, which means it could be 2.5 or be 4.5. Is that within 1%? That's plus or minus?
Well, it's within 1% of our overall projection, not the overall growth rate.
Overall projection?
Yes.
And what does that... What 1% of the overall projection represent in terms of dollars?
About $40 million. About $40 million? It's about $40 million.
About $40 million. Were we short last time, or high on the estimation?
No, not at all. In fact, we were... In fact, we... The amount we collected exceeded what we initially projected. Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Okay, so we didn't get hurt?
No, not at all. I think revenue projection is one of our strengths for the... For our office, the CAO's office.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Thank you, Mr. CAO. Are there any other questions on this item? I believe the action is noted and filed, so open the roll on item number 16, tabulate Do we have a delay-of-the-game penalty going here? Okay, there we are. There's 10 ayes. That item is approved. Mr. Wax, for an introduction?
Yes, Mr. President, if I just might take a moment from our schedule to introduce some young people who have come to visit us today. It's always an honor every year when we have the Advanced Placement Government Class at Verdugal Hills High School visit us, along with their teacher and advisor, Will Reinhardt. They're a remarkable group of people, and this year's class is no different. In fact, it's been extraordinary in their devotion to their studies, as well as their contribution to the community service and their involvement with volunteer programs. They are a tremendous asset, not only to the school, but to our community, and ultimately the future leaders of our city. And today, they are on a trip, and they're kind of in a hurry here because of a late start, and they're going off to the Criminal Courts Building, but they're studying the inner workings of local government, and they've taken time to come to the city council to visit us for a while. And I wonder if the students and their teachers and advisors would stand and be recognized by the council. We're very delighted to have you here. You make everyone very proud.[1569.48][1569.48](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Wax, for that introduction, and we'd like to welcome our students to visiting city council today. Have a good day today. Madam Clerk, we have a reconsideration request by a council member?
Yes, Councilmember Wax requests item number 23C be reconsidered.
Even though that was Councilwoman Walters that wanted that, so... Councilwoman Walters would like to have item number 23C reconsidered. Is there any colleague that objects to have item 23C reconsidered? Seeing no objection, item number 23C is again before us, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Walters.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Wax and I agreed that we look alike.[1616.01][1616.01](LAUGHTER). Easy mix-up.
You have a nicer suit, Councilwoman.
And I'm not wearing a tie today. Yeah, right, he has a nicer tie. Thank you, Mr. President, and council, for reconsidering this item. This item is for waiver of funds for a downtown event that is being brought in by another council member, and I need to tell you that the American Heart Association, for whom this waiver is being proposed, approached me for it as the council member representing downtown, and I found out that it was a fundraiser after asking them, were they charging participants for the event? If people are being charged for an event, it is our policy not to waive the fees. The people are not being charged, but it said the group will require participants to secure pledges for the event. So it is a fundraiser, and I denied it on those grounds, and it seems to me that the American Heart Association could assume these costs, and so I urge a no vote on this item.
Colleagues, item number 23C is again before us. Is there any other council colleague that would like to speak on item 23C? It's a special event motion, item 23C. Give the council a few moments to take a look at it. Okay? Anyone else wish to speak? Councilwoman Goldberg?
Is there staff here who can respond to the issues that were raised by Mrs. Walters? I think they're important issues. Maybe we should hold this till Tuesday, you know, and have someone look into this and come back, because...
Is that your request, councilman?
Yeah, it would be a request, because it's... You know, I don't want to exactly vote no on the Heart Association attempting to raise money. On the other hand, you raise good questions, so maybe we can ask her to hold it till Tuesday and ask staff to...
Request by Councilwoman Goldberg to continue it until Tuesday so additional information can be received by the council. Councilwoman Walters?
It's fine with me to continue it, and as Ms. Goldberg said, she didn't want to vote no on the American Heart Association, nor did I. This is not voting no on the Heart Association.
I know.
It's voting yes for the city's pocketbook, and we'll support their march in any way possible.
Right.
But it's costing us money and winds up being a donation.
Yes. Yes.
--of public funds.
Yes, we need to get the information on that. So, I would ask that we hold this till Tuesday and ask staff to come back with, how does this happen, and why did we, why did we go forward with this, and at whose request, and can they negotiate perhaps with them in the meantime to deal with the issues that we're talking about?
As a courtesy to the maker of the motion, Councilwoman Misakowski, it's been requested that item number 23C be continued until Tuesday, so additional information can be obtained by staff, so we can discuss this.
I have no objection. I was requested to bring this motion in by the City Legislative Analyst Office, so I think the C.L.A. can be here to talk about the issue, the policy. I think Ms. Walters has made her point very clear about why and how she believes we should look at it. And I think we need to hear from the C.L.A. as to whether or not there's any other general rule or policy that they follow.
Okay, without any objection, this item will be continued until this upcoming Tuesday, okay? Which is the 6th. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, the City Attorney has advised that Reckon Parks is here now on item number nine. Do you wish to take that up?
Yes, we can do that. We do have item number nine now before us. Colleagues, Reckon Park staff could come forward. Mr. Holden, I believe that you called item nine special, and I believe your questions hopefully could be answered at this time. We'll have staff go right ahead. Sir?
Recreation and Parks, John Dugan. The Department of Recreation and Parks administers the contracts with the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy to provide security along the Mulholland Corridor overlook. The money that is generated by the Mountains Conservancy issuing citations along Mulholland is used to cover the cost of that contract. And what is before you is a recommendation to add additional $72,000 from the unappropriated balance to that contractual amount to extend that service to Deervale along the corridor. And this was tried on a pilot basis and found to be successful, and the recommendation is to continue with that operation. In addition, the C.A.O. has recommended that the Department of Transportation closely monitor the receipts from the Mountains Conservancy to ensure that the costs of operations are actually being recovered and that the number of citations that are issued match up with the intended contractual amount.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members--
Push your button, Mr. Holden.
Initially, it was intended to be a pilot program to see just how successful it would be, number one, and number two, whether or not they would recover the funds through parking citations. I don't, I think, just close the park, post some signs, the park is closed, and no parking after a certain period of time. Obviously, they're not doing that. It's a revenue methodology designed to obtain more revenue, period. My question is, the Department of Transportation is processing the tickets. Is Lockheed involved in it in any way? And if they so, are they getting a share of this? Will the courts be getting a portion of it? Because we have a shortfall. To start this program out, I think you gave $175,000 initially, something like that?
Yes.
$170,000. And what did you recover?
The Department of Transportation reports $120,000 in the--
No, you gave a cost of $170,000, you took in $150,000, you cited $2,200 citation, and now you're asking for another $72,000 on top of the shortfall you already have. So, obviously, it is not working. The money, I'm sure, is going to Lockheed, and I'm not gonna vote to extend the program to just cite, just to write citations and have the public pay for something that they're not benefiting. If you want to charge them to go to the park, fine. Put a fee, put a gate there, fine. Provide the security you need, fine. And they don't know in advance what they're paying. It'll be distributed amongst all the people who will be attending the park area. But just to say, let's pick out this guy, that guy, that guy, and you're not providing adequate parking in the area, but people do go there, I just don't think it's right. Just the wrong way to go, and I'm gonna have to vote no for the extension. It's just another fraud.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg.
If, where does one park that's, one is getting a ticket in this, in this area?
Along Mulholland.
And where is there to park if you want to use the recreation area?
There's very little parking in that area. There is a park at Runyon Canyon. There's a parking lot there, very small parking lot.
So, how does the members of the general public who don't live in the area get access to these mountains?
They have to use the parking lot and the limited overlook of parking that is available.
Would you say the parking is adequate for the number of people that want to use the recreation area?
I don't have a good understanding of the number of visitors the facility gets every day.
See, I have a little bit of a problem with us making it illegal to park near an area that people want to go hiking. I don't mind if they have to walk a little. After all, most of the people who go there go to hike. But if the hike is all done on freeway, not freeways, but highways, before you actually get to the location, what you do is create a private park reserve that only people who happen to have the money to live in the area get to use. I don't think we ever intended that. And you got 5,000 people paying parking tickets of at least $28 or more. I'm not so sure that that's, you know, what all of us intended when we wanted to have recreation areas and leave wild and open areas. I would like to ask that we get some more information about where parking is available. See, I don't have any problem where people are asked to pay a nominal fee to park in an area and then choose to try and avoid paying a few bucks by, you know, making it impossible for people to park near their homes. I don't mind us doing some restrictions there. But it sounds to me like these restrictions may make it very difficult for anybody to use the recreation areas that don't happen to actually live there. So, I would actually like to ask if we could get this held over a week and get some real information about what parking is available, how far away is it from the areas that people want to walk, and for the existing pilot area as well. You know, when you get $150,000 revenue in tickets, it means that a lot of people know they're going to get a ticket before they park there and still park there. That leads me to believe that there's no other choice. And so, it's an expensive parking lot for them, you know? They get a parking ticket of probably 28. How much is the ticket?
I'm not certain. I think, as well, the Department of Transportation can provide additional information. I believe we will find is that these citations are issued for evening parking, which is prohibited along that corridor. But I think that information needs to come from the Department of Transportation.
Well, that's why I'm saying I'm not voting no. I want to get more information. So, let's find out what time of day these citations occur in, where the park is open or not open, at what hours, and for the two areas, there are three areas in the, in the report, for all three areas, so that we can make some decision based on whether or not we're doing something that's appropriate or inappropriate.
Thank you, Councilwoman. In addition, Council Office Five has requested this be continued.
So moved.
So, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Ms. Walters, Ms. Chick, if you wouldn't mind, each of you have requested to speak, but if we can continue this a week--
Right.
--without your objection, why don't we do so?
Without objection, Mr. President.
Councilwoman?
Yes. A week would be what day? Friday?
Next Friday. We could continue it Tuesday.
Okay. I will not be here at that time. I don't object to the continuance, but there are comments that I would like to make if they, if you deem it appropriate to be made at this time.
Tuesday?
We're gonna make her comments.
If staff could, or you could speak now, Councilwoman. Go right ahead.
Whichever you prefer.
Go right ahead. You can speak now if you wish. We'll continue it till next Friday.
All right. Thank you. The things that I wanted to share with you, council members, at this point about this, I'm not certain about the parking along Mulholland. As I recall the information, these were citations that were after hours, in the late evening hours, because people like to come up and look at the lights of the valley. Now, that may be incorrect information, but that's what I had. There's a need for some additional funding for security at the New Compton-Slauson Park. And so, the pilot program was to see if this program along Mulholland generated any funds that were not needed for its enforcement that could go to Compton-Slauson Park to assist in providing security there. You will recall that it's the Mountain Recreation Association that is building the Compton-Slauson Park and will be in charge of it. And that's the essence of the program as far as Compton-Slauson goes. With respect to the hours and all of that, you will get that information on Tuesday. So, or next Friday, whenever it comes up. So, I just wanted you to bear that part of it in mind.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Now, this item will be continued until next Friday without further objection. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Do you wish to recess this meeting to go into the special meeting?
I think that would be appropriate. We will hold items 18, 24, 25 on the desk of the regular meeting. We do have a special meeting. So, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on the special meeting?
Burnson, Chick, Fear, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Misakowski, Patek, Padele, Lee, Thomas, Swineage, Wax, Walters, Farraro, 10 members present in quorum, Mr. President.
Ah-ha, we still have a quorum. We do have one item. Go right ahead, Madam Clerk.
Wait, wait, wait.
Uh-oh. We're checking for a quorum here. Okay, still have a quorum. Proceed, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Item number one on the special agenda is a communication from the L.A. Housing Development Committee and, excuse me, Department and its Housing and Community Redevelopment Committee report submitted. One of the recommendations is to hold a TEPRA hearing. I don't believe there's any cards on this item.
No, there is not.
And the second recommendation is to approve the resolution.
Okay, we do have item number one on the special council agenda before us. Are there any council members that wish to speak on special agenda item number one? Okay, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on special agenda item number one? Okay, the public hearing is closed, and I see no council members that wish to speak also. So, Madam Clerk, open the roll on special council agenda item number one and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That item is approved. Now, I do believe we have a second item, which is a closed session item on the special agenda, and we are going to hold that on the desk and take all of the closed session items at once. So, why don't we recess the special agenda, go back to the regular agenda?
Do you want to do the cards on, we have cards in the special?
Here we are. On item number two of the special agenda item, we do have a speaker or speakers, which is a Michael Conney and Bob Gale.
Yes, good morning, Mr. President and council members. My name is Michael F. Conney. I am General Counsel of the Los Angeles Police Revolver and Athletic Club, which is known as LAPRAC. I have with me this morning LAPRAC's General Manager, Bob Gale. And just briefly to address the council, yesterday afternoon, LAPRAC learned that there were two items concerning LAPRAC on the agenda for the special meeting this morning of the council. The first item involves LAPRAC's permit at the Los Angeles Police Academy, which, if the council recalls, in full council action on March 15th, the council approved a five-year extension of the permit. And at this point, I have been in contact with General Services as well as the City Attorney's Office to finalize that amendment, and we hope to have that done very shortly. As you may also recall, at that meeting, the council also suggested that LAPRAC sit down with the various city entities and discuss and resolve the other property issues involving the academy, and we look forward to doing that shortly. Now, yesterday, we also saw on the agenda for today's meeting the issue of the trademark item and reference to possible litigation involving LAPRAC. And certainly, LAPRAC is very concerned about that, and we certainly want an opportunity to sit down and address that issue more fully with the city council and the city's attorneys. But certainly, Chief Parks has been intricately involved in this issue and is very knowledgeable and concerned about it. And I would urge the city council to continue your deliberations and dealings on this issue until Chief Parks is available and can also address you. No one at LAPRAC, not myself or any LAPRAC members or the board, received any formal notice of this meeting or that this issue was coming up, and we certainly would like an opportunity to further address the issue, both with the council and/or your attorneys and our trademark attorneys, and to involve Chief Parks. So, I would respectfully ask the council to continue deferring any action on this matter until Chief Parks is available. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We do have another speaker, Mr. Tutte Hayes. Mr. Hayes, welcome and go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. Our famous graffiti artist, Robbie Cornell, made a replication of the LAPD badge. I hope you've seen it. It's a beautiful work of art, but it's also a parody as well as a condemning symbol of the LAPD. It has a skeletal head with red eyes. You cannot, in this country, as I know it, copyright a book title, nor can you copyright a song title or title for porn. LAPD may fall into that particular category. There have been so many books about LAPD, Uncovered, LAPD Confidential. How can you go so far as to say the LAPD internally cannot have officers capitalizing on this? As you no doubt know, the county coroner's office has been selling tags that they put on tolls, as well as other replicas of things that they put on cadavers at the coroner's office. I think it's kind of silly to pursue this. It may be embarrassing. It may be humiliating. It may even cause distress for other people. But this is simply, I think, going a little too far for government to try to impose its ability to take acronyms and say we own them and tell other people they cannot utilize them. If you go after Robbie, and I think he's been around for a while doing a lot of things to assault politicians particularly, then perhaps you can go after the internal activities with the LAPD. I don't care whether there's a dead man's skull or, I don't play poker, so I don't know what the card hand actually means. But I think that you should withdraw from this and allow LAPD to take care of its affairs with Rampart Division. And I think you should also concentrate on Rampart and leave the frivolity and the silliness alone.
Thank you, sir. The special agenda item number two will hold on the desk for a moment in order that we could take all the special agenda items, all the closed session items at once. So, let us go back to the regular agenda. And what do we have before us, Madam Clerk?
Item number 18. You have a card from the public on the item.
Okay, we do have item number 18 before us. Colleagues, I do have a speaker's card, Elizabeth Schroder. Ms. Schroder?
Okay.
Do you have a point of order, Mr. Holden? Thank you, Mr. Holden.
It sounds like, wait a minute. We have, I have public comment on this continuously. This lady has spoken. We're gonna continue this matter for two weeks anyway. Yes.
Mr. Holden, you've requested that it be continued two weeks?
Yes.
Okay, this is the first time you've requested. Ms. Schroder, this item is gonna be continued two weeks. Would you mind coming back in two weeks when this is before us again?
Not at all.
And speak at that time? Two weeks would be the 16th of June, ma'am.
Thank you.
Very good, ma'am. Thank you. Is there any objection to continuing this for two weeks? Okay, seeing no objection, that will be the order. Next item?
Item number 24 is still on the desk.
Item number 24, colleagues, is now on the desk. Mr. Burnson, I believe that you would want to be recognized for this item.
There's a card.
And Candido, I believe there's a card also.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council.
Push your button.
After meeting with a lot of our traffic enforcement officers and the captains of the two divisions in my district, one of the big detriments we have with the incurring of drag racing are, number one, the fact that the spectators are there, and a lot of the racing goes on with the benefit and for the spectators. What this would do would be instructing the city attorney to draft an ordinance, making it a-- it a violation so they could be cited for being a spectator at a drag race. These drag races don't take place, they take place on our city streets and endanger property and life and everything else. Also, this asks the city attorney to allow for these vehicles that are caught in the act to be impounded for up to one hundred and eighty days, and they not be released until all the costs are paid. And also, we are going to pursue the inspection process where the corrections are made so that they're not, they're legal for street driving. These are the things that we're asking in this. This will come back to the council in the form of an ordinance. We're asking the city attorney to draft an ordinance. I think this is very important. Ms. Miskowski has joined me in this, and we felt that it was important enough that we should go directly to the city attorney for the draft ordinance. It will come back to Public Safety Committee and then to the council. So I would ask for an eye vote on this.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. Burnson, if you were to ask the, if the request would be to ask the city attorney to make a finding and determine whether or not such a proposal is legal or constitutional, not constitutional, I would vote for it. But to take the leap jump and say, let's draft an ordinance, which may not become a law, for the purpose of denying people the right to look, wait. If a blind person is standing in this area and you're saying, well, you're a spectator. No, he says, I'm blind. Then he might say, well, my vision is not good enough to have seen. Or when the car went by, I really closed my eyes. You're not going to get too much conviction, and I think it's, whether or not it's constitutional, it's questionable.
Just vote against it, Nate.
No, no, it's not. I'm just, I'm just saying that.
Just vote against it if you don't want to.
I'm not, I don't want to vote against it. It's like voting against you, and I don't want to do that. But I can't vote for this today unless you rephrase it, asking the question on the constitutionality of it. The city attorney is sitting there, just shooting from the hip. How would you respond to that?
This office will do the research on it, and we would come back. If there's a problem with it, we would present that to council when we bring the, if we bring an ordinance back.
If you bring it back.
Or if we couldn't bring an ordinance back, we would tell you this is the reason we couldn't.
Why, you're not going to draft an ordinance then? You would give the reason?
Yes, we would give a reason at that time.
Why, at that time, why you're not drafting an ordinance? Well, you know, during the civil unrest in the city, early on, the first time they happened, there was a panic. And the legislators in Sacramento introduced legislation, which became law, that says that any two people gathering on a street corner constituted a threat, and they could be cited for the intent to incite the riot because two of them were talking. And you know what? It went through like, you won't believe, because that's the, it was the fever at the time. So, of course, it was declared unconstitutional, and they were just reacting to the emotions at the time. Mr. President, remember, I've always been against drag racing in streets and neighborhoods. Does not provide for a safe environment for people who just want to walk the street or drive safely. But I just have, it's not a gut feeling, it's just my belief that you're asking the city attorney to draft an ordinance, which I know will be unconstitutional, and I just don't make legislation that way. So therefore, for that reason, I cannot support it.
Thank you, Councilman. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg.
What's the approximate dollar amount that it would cost someone whose car was impounded for one hundred and eighty days?
Tell me that.
Nobody knows? Well, I would imagine that it's probably more than most of the cars are worth. So in essence, we're going to have a penalty that says that we get to seize and keep your automobile if you're involved in one drag racing event. Is that, is that what you're looking for, mister?
Could.
That's what you're looking for? Because that, no, that's, that's, that's not a could. That's what's going to happen. That's what's going to happen. So we got a youngster who's stupid, who's doing this, and instead of citing them and fining them and so on and so forth, we're going to keep their vehicle. I'm not sure that the penalty fits the crime. It's already illegal to drag race. There are already consequences to it. Well, you know, have we stopped murder? Have we stopped burglary? Have we stopped rape? Have we stopped anything? We haven't stopped anything. Well, and I don't think it will stop it. You see, I think what you're going to do is you're going to just make people get more creative as to where and when they do it and how late at night it will be. And I have some problems with somebody who is a spectator being cited. What law would they have broken? A law that says that you may not watch an activity? What's it called?
Aiding and Abetting.
Aiding and Abetting, is that it?
Yes.
How is watching aiding and abetting? I see, I have some difficulty with it. I don't have any difficulty with the idea that drag racing should be illegal because I think it should be, and I think it's dangerous, and I think it's a terrible practice. And I know people personally, from what I was teaching, that were hurt. So it's not out of any sympathy, believe me. But I think what we're doing here is not appropriate, and I don't think I can support it as it's currently written.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Mr. Burnson for a second time.
Members of the council, obviously, the city attorney's not going to draft anything that is not constitutional. We currently have ordinances on the books that we are allowed to impound the cars for up to thirty days. I don't know whether they're keeping them for thirty days or not. This ordinance extends the period of which we may keep them, doesn't say they will. It is a deterrent, let's face it. This is something that is strong enough that it's going to deter people from going out and doing these things, and they do them at night now, Mrs. Goldberg, on our city streets, and they endanger life and property. Okay, well, we have an opportunity to do something about it. But we're not going to do anything about it if we continue with the current practice, which is not effective. Now, maybe you don't have these kind of problems in your district. I do. And people in the San Fernando Valley, the north end of the San Fernando Valley, I know that Mr. Padilla, if he were here, is Mr. Padilla is not here today, if he were here?
He is here?
Oh, he is here? Okay. I know Mr. Padilla has the same problem with the drag racing, and maybe you might want to have, say a couple of words on this. The officers have come to us and asked us for help because they're unable to deal with the problem. We're also going to talk to the sheriff's office about inspecting these vehicles and making sure that when they go back on the street, that all the illegal equipment is removed, so they're legal for street driving. We're also going to talk to the courts to make sure that proper penalties are assessed. Right now, they're just allowed, they're given a citation, they pay the fine, they go back out, and the next night, they're out there doing it again. Now, you know, I hope to God none of you ever lose a member of your family because of it or a constituent. But this is what you're doing. You're, by not getting tough, you're not getting tough, it's not to penalize these people, it's to deter the use of it. That's why we have penalties. It isn't just to punish. Penalties are put there to deter things that are violations of the law, and you two people aren't even listening. You are up there criticizing, they're busy talking, they're not even listening. Yeah, yeah, I know. Anyway, the point is that laws are made to protect the public and to deter the use, and that's what this is for, not to penalize them. I would urge an eye vote.
Okay, I see no one else that wishes to speak, but I do have a speaker's card. Candido Mars?
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. You know, Ms. Goldberg, one day, in the elevator, you and I were there, and I told you that in all the years that I've been here, that I've fallen in love with you because you stand for something? Yes, I know who you are and what you are. I know that you're a very caring person, but sometimes I go blank when I hear some of the statements. Every night, the one thing I'm guaranteed tonight, between one-thirty and three o'clock, that there'll be drag racing on Reseda Boulevard to Cessnon. Every night, what we do is we go out there to see if they've run into the walls at the park. On the corner of Cessnon and Reseda, there are five walls that have been damaged by car racers. Now, you're talking about spectators. You know what the spectators do? They are the ones that are aiding the drag racers to make sure that they can do the drag. Once these vehicles go out of control and they hit and go up on the curves, what they do is they help lift the vehicle and get it off there so that they can get out of there before the police show up. We have children that are playing near the park, this is near E.T. Park, that are playing there between six and seven o'clock. These same kids that are drag racing are now endangering these kids that are six, seven, eight, and nine-year-old kids. They're not allowed to play on their own streets because we have drag racers that are preparing their cars so that between one-thirty and three o'clock, they can be prepared to race. This isn't about taking away somebody's rights. This is about protecting children. And this is what's happening. You're protecting children, and you're protecting property. And if you'd like, Ms. Goldberg, I would love to take this afternoon and take you up into the area and show you the property damage that has taken place over and over again. I just don't want to have to come back here one day and say to you, Ms. Goldberg, you know what? We had a child killed last night because some drag racer wanted to drag with another individual down Reseda Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tutte Hayes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council. Of course, you realize that the matter you have before you does not concern drag racers. It concerns spectators. How does it work? Officer spots a person standing around watching a drag race, a pedestrian. He says, lead me to your car. And the pedestrian turns and leads him down the road, the path, the alley to his car, and thereby the officer impounds the car for one hundred and eighty days. Now, let's get serious, folks. Is that going to happen? Is that a law within the law for a person to lead someone to their possessions? You can't even get into bank accounts when the judge orders it. So I'm saying, be serious. You're talking about penalizing people for watching something. Mr. Holden's presentation was rather unusual, but it did have some merit to it. You cannot punish people for just watching. I mean, Warriors, yes, you can punish them for watching. Peeping Toms, yes, you can punish them for watching, but for watching a drag race? I think not. So consider that any kind of impairment in this city for any period of time starts at eleven hundred dollars. Federal courts have decided that the INS, the internal revenues, they're simply taking people's boats, homes, and property to benefit the government. This looks like you designed this for the same purpose, to confiscate Jaguars and Corvettes in order to benefit the government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. The chair recognizes Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. Burnson. We were listening, and I agree, and I'm supporting this motion, exactly as was so eloquently stated by members of the public. In some ways, yes, this is about rights and possible misapplication of this law, but the reality on the streets is that there's unsafe activity going on, unsafe for the drivers of racers out there, unsafe for the folks who are watching, unsafe for the neighbors because oftentimes they're not in entirely industrial or commercial areas, but they're near residential areas. It's a dangerous situation out there. And you've heard me probably more than anybody else speak on trying to create opportunities for young people, trying to create activities and alternatives to trouble being on the street. And I, my office has been approached by police officers, by young people, by hot rod enthusiasts, as, well, street racing, the activity isn't a bad thing. So let's develop a racetrack somewhere, or do those kinds of things. Or let's not penalize the people who are interested in racing because it can be a healthy activity. And maybe it can be when it's done inappropriate, but when people are racing in the middle of the night, when people are racing on city streets, that is not appropriate. It's against the law, and it's dangerous. And that's what this motion addresses. Now, I know Councilmember Holden raised some concerns about the constitutionality or the legality of what we're trying to do here. We're requesting the city attorney to draft the ordinance, and I'm confident that when the city attorney's office presents the ordinance, they will also speak to the legality and the constitutionality of what we're trying to do. But the need for action is clear, and the need for action is very evident, and we should move forward today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any other colleague that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we're going to open up the roll on it. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number twenty-four and tabulate the vote?
Eight ayes, three noes.
That item is approved. Next item.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
I do believe we do have item number twenty-five, and we could hear the entire matter in open session provided that there was a vote of the council to do so. Mr. Wax, would you like to move that we hear item number twenty-five entirely in open session?
First, I'd like, yeah.
Because we can do that with ten votes.
I'd like the people to speak, but I don't think that they really know what to speak until something is presented. And so perhaps the city attorney could make a presentation in public, then we can have some input from the community, and then I'm going to ask that we continue this so that the community really be able to be fully informed and consider the options. None of us, none of us or our staffs had a chance to know about this while, until it happened yesterday, and, Mr. Pritzker, perhaps you can, paper knows everything anyway, seems so, you might as well. I think it's really important to involve the community in what has been an ongoing community issue. And as you well know, we've worked for many years on this, many council members, and you have negotiated this without us being aware of it. Yesterday, you informed my office of it. Community knows nothing. They really need to be involved. They really need to discuss the options. They really need their input. They may embrace this, they may not, they may ask for some changes. But I'd like you to, in open session, inform the public of what is, and then there are some people here, and then I'm going to ask for continuance till we can get a little bit more community input. But I'd like Mr. Pritzker to make the presentation.
Is there any objection by any council member that we consider this item in open session at this time? Mr. Pritzker's presentation?
I just have a question of Mr. Pritzker. Mr. Pritzker, what's your view? Is it, are there any dangers in doing it in open? I think we'd prefer to do so if it were possible, but we'd like to hear from you.
Well, there are, there are, there may be some who would not like to see this settlement go forward, and it might give an opportunity for those who are opposed to certain benefits to the city of Los Angeles to figure out how to oppose it. Other than that, I can't, can't think of anything that would be detrimental to the city.
Okay, very good. Mr. Pritzker, go ahead with the presentation.
Okay, I first want to begin by saying that last fall or winter, this council put together a committee of, I believe, five council deputies, and I did inform last January those council deputies of the outlines of this settlement. But let me begin by explaining what the lawsuit is about. This is a lawsuit that began back in nineteen ninety-four, and it was a lawsuit over the Burbank Airport's failure to create a master plan EIR. And without, and let me say that we went to Superior Court. The judge ruled in favor of a demur and threw our case out. We went to the Court of Appeal, and in December of ninety-eight, the Court of Appeal overturned the Superior Court and sent the matter back for a hearing in Superior Court. In the meantime, we have been approached by the Burbank Airport Authority, and they have suggested that if we would drop the litigation, that they would agree to do certain things. And I assume that the council now is of the opinion that they would like me to. By the way, you know, before I go any further, I did bring copies for all of the council members to look at this. Perhaps we should distribute them as I go over these items. This agreement would settle our litigation with the airport, and in doing so, we're agreeing to do certain things, and they're agreeing to do certain things. First of all, the Airport Authority is agreeing to undertake what's called a Part 161 study. Now, they have agreed publicly to undertake such a study prior to my coming before you today, but at the time that we were negotiating these conditions, they had not done so. The significance of this Part 161 study is that it is a condition- The significance of this Part 161 study is that it is a condition precedent to a permanent curfew being imposed at the airport, a curfew that would begin at 10:00 p.m. and, and at 7:00 a.m. So I think it is a, a significant step, uh, that the airport is willing to do that, although, as I said, they have already publicly committed to do so. Number two, uh, they have agreed that within six months of, uh, all the necessary parties approving a replacement terminal for the airport, the authority would undertake a revised Part 150 study to specifically look at, um, noise compatibility and runway utilization. Uh, this has been a very significant, uh, issue over the years. Back in 1987, uh, this city commissioned a noise study to look at whether runway utilization could be used as a means of lowering the noise impact to, uh, adjacent residences. Uh, we concluded from our analysis that it could. We've provided that information on several occasions to the Airport Authority, to the FAA, um, and others. Uh, they are agreeing that they would, uh, would look at that issue once again. And some of you may be aware that, uh, there was a agreement between, uh, the City of Burbank and the Airport Authority, um, you know, to attempt to bar all easterly departures, uh, but that, um, portion, at least of that agreement, has, uh, gone by the wayside as a result of comments, uh, by the FAA. Thirdly, um, the, um, authority agrees to, um, look at surface traffic impacts and that the city can participate in surface, surface traffic, uh, analysis and that they will impose, uh, the mitigation measures that are the result of such an analysis so long as there are not federal, a federal bar from them spending monies to do such mitigation. Uh, this is, uh, is significant because our city Department of Transportation, um, has sought information that they were not able to obtain about 10 years ago when the replacement terminal was first proposed. Um, and we raised this issue about, uh, traffic impacts in Superior Court. Uh, we were not successful there. We went to the Court of Appeals. We were not successful there. But nevertheless, the Airport Authority, uh, is willing, uh, to study and impose mitigation measures, um, of, with regard to surface traffic. Fourth, um, and I'm on, uh, page three of this agreement, the, uh, authority, uh, would, um, participate with the city in testing the accuracy of the airport's noise monitoring system around the airport. Um, and the Airport Authority would, uh, foot the bill for this study. There have been concerns expressed by residents around the airport that the, uh, system currently used to monitor noise is not accurate, and, uh, that's, that's the, uh, purpose that this clause is in here. Now, fifth, the city, on its part, agrees to consider, uh, whether to grant approval under, uh, Public Utilities Code Section 21661.6 as to whether the airport will be allowed to use, uh, about 22 acres of land adjacent to the airport in the City of Los Angeles for parking purposes. And, uh, we agree, um, that if we, if we don't, um, if we don't approve their use of this land for parking within nine months, uh, then the benefits, the other benefits of this settlement would go away. Um, and then we, we agree to dismiss the lawsuit. Uh, also, there is a, kind of a nondiscrimination provision in this settlement that, uh, they will, um, not discriminate against City of Los Angeles residents when it comes to insulating, doing sound insulation of homes adjacent to the airport. Uh, that, that's basically the, uh, summary of what's in this settlement. Uh, like I said, I have communicated this to, uh, the CLA and to, um, to council deputies in its broad parameters. We can, uh, we, we do have a hearing, a status conference set in court on Monday. We could ask for an additional continuance, uh, if it's felt that it's needed to get further input from the community and that we need community input, uh, before agreeing, um, to, uh, to settle this lawsuit on these terms. But I, I felt it my obligation to, uh, at least bring this before you today, um, and find out what the council's desires are.
Thank you, sir. I do have four speakers' cards, and I'd like to hear from the public, and then we'll go into the council members who wish to speak on this item. Um, I'm going to call all the individuals at once, and if they could come forward and line up behind the podium, and if you could keep your comments to about a minute or so, I would appreciate it. That would be Lev Mailer, Tom Patterson, Lori Dinkin, Ira Siegel. Welcome, folks, and go right ahead as you approach the podium. Mr. Mailer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the council. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would ask you to indulge me at least maybe a half a minute, more than a minute. I prepared these, uh, this, this statement before I heard Mr. Pritzker's presentation, which frankly, I thought we would never hear. Uh, this deal could have been offered years ago, and it has arrived today. Simply put, it is not in the interest of those citizens of Los Angeles affected. The deal will let the foxes assess the chickens' problems. Who in this room will decide whether or not the Airport Authority showed good faith? The City of Burbank has two months to decide to buy land for the new terminal. This deal is in its interests. The FAA has ordered a Part 161 noise study which would deal with the noise problem. The authority's argument that the eastern runways closed for takeoffs for safety is a farce. The recent crash of the Southwest plane shows the safety on landings is completely ignored. Otherwise, the western approach too would be closed. Add to that the dominant takeoff runway to the south is not 750 feet from the terminal now, which is an FAA requirement, so the safety aspect is pure hypocrisy. I cannot impugn the politics of this deal, but I know the residents of the East San Fernando Valley are going to be hopping mad if this deal is passed. A deal for the residents includes caps on flights, opening the eastern runway, curfew on flights, which reflects our share of the noise policy. Otherwise, this deal, which was revealed to us at 4:00 p.m. yesterday, although your agenda is published 72 hours in advance, sells out those affected by the noise because our people have not had an opportunity to review the documents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mailer. Next speaker is, uh, Tom Patterson.
Tom Patterson.
Mr. Patterson?
Uh, first, I want to say I'm very angry and I'm very disappointed that Mr. Pritzker used this approach to bring this matter before the city council. We've had numerous prior meetings with Mr. Pritzker to present data for him to consider to justify the City of Los Angeles seeking the airport to prepare a master plan. To talk about additional studies, this airport's been studied to death. The east runway takeoffs is not an issue. The FAA said it would not impose a ban on easterly takeoffs. There are, there's a new issue now that's been interjected this morning by Mr. Pritzker, talking about use of L.A. land for parking. The whole current controversy at Burbank is the, is the consequence of the City of Burbank exercising its rights under the Public Utilities Code that says where there is land within their jurisdiction, they have the right to pass on the use of that land for airport uses. It would seem to me that the City of Los Angeles now has some similar legal leverage. The City of Burbank has spent millions of dollars to support that legal right. I, I think it's premature at this time for the City of Los Angeles to give up any legal leverage. There's no decision made on any terminal yet. It's going to be a long time before there's any agreement on the size of the terminal. Nearly 8,000 voters in Burbank attempted to put an initiative on the ballot that was disqualified on a technicality that rejected the size of the proposed terminal. So I think it's premature for the city to give up its legal position at this time. You need to keep every legal leverage that you've got because we don't know what's coming down the road with respect to the development of this airport. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lori Dinkin, Ms. Dinkin, followed by Ira Siegel.
Uh, thank you very much for allowing us to talk here today. Uh, excuse my dark glasses. I had, uh, eye surgery yesterday, but I felt, in spite of the doctor's orders, I, to come down here today. I am also speaking for Sherman Oaks. I got a call this morning, and she said, "Whatever we talk about will be her own, will be their decision." So we are talking about Valley Village, Studio City, Tuluga Lake, Sherman Oaks, and, um, we are here to, we are very angry with Mr. Pritzker and Mr. Han because we had a meeting on May the 18th at which I was present. I talked with Mr. Pritzker. Not one word, not one word was said about a meeting with the, uh, with the Burbank Council. I find this very unusual, and I find this very sneaky, and we don't forget this. And I wanted to tell this to Mr. Pritzker today in person. I couldn't believe when I heard that there was a meeting today, which we found out just last night at 4:00 in the afternoon. Um, Mr. P, Mr. Patterson has said anything that I really wanted to say, but I did want to tell this to Mr. Han, that we are extremely disappointed. He has definitely stabbed us in the back. We have been working on the airport for 22 years, and this is only to now have a sellout here by the city, obviously. We cannot understand it. Also, Mrs. Garvey, who is the head of the FAA, had suggested that we, um, have a meeting with the parties such as Burbank Authority, the council, the, uh, our attorneys, and that the homeowners should be around, uh, at, at the table and discuss this, and this has not taken place. Instead, we hear of secret negotiations. What happened ever to the Brown Act? Thank you very much, because as Mr. Patterson had said, everything that I needed to. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Siegel?
My name's Ira Siegel. I live in the San Fernando Valley, and, uh, thank you, Mr. President and council members, for hearing me on this issue. And, uh, yesterday at 4:00, I mean, I don't have anything prepared. Uh, I got a phone call that we were sold out, you know, by, by Han's office, and, and, uh, that concerns me. You know, I live in the valley with, uh, a million other people.
Are you a small used truck?
Well, that we were sold out, you know, you know, and, uh, well, you know, and, uh, and one of the things that, that I'm concerned about is, is I'm concerned about, you know, my environment, and I'm concerned about the quality of life. You know, I live, I live here, and I listen to these jets, and I see them coming out constantly. And I think that, you know, that people should be allowed to come to the table, that the common welfare of the community, you know, and not big business and not, you know, political people, you know, aspiring to do certain things, you know, you know, should take, take precedent over, over the common folks that live in this valley. You know, people work eight hours a day, and they come home and, and they want to enjoy themselves. And, uh, and, you know, I sit in traffic for two hours a day, and, uh, they have to listen to planes that come out at 6:30 in the morning. I see them coming out constantly, you know, and, uh, you know, not letting everybody, you know, come and participate in this, I think is wrong, and I'm against this. And I think that you should, uh, you know, have this as an open session. This closed-door session, uh, you know, is not fair for the people who have been working on this for a long time. I've been around for maybe a year. I'm not tuned into this, uh, you know, uh, real well, and, uh, you know, this opportunity, you know, to, to, uh, to get together and sit down and, and work this out at a table, you know, with, with everybody who's concerned, I think is a great thing, and it's, you know, it's the American dream. It's, you know, people working together. You know, you are our citizen servants. I shouldn't have to be coming here to talk to you about this. You should be doing the right thing, you know, and, and, you know, as, you know, you know, working for the people in general, for, for the majority and not the minority, not the people who come in here with their tapes and their, and, uh, you know, some surveys, you know, that affect maybe, you know, 5,000 people, you know, and, uh, you know, I hear about, about the jobs, about the 900 jobs. What about the 90,000 people? The 7,500 signatures that they trashed, that affected 70,000 people. Their children, their grandparents, everyone who signed that petition is talking to their families now, and they're not going to take it anymore, you know, and they want to be brought to the table. They want to participate in this, and I think it's really important that, uh, that they be given this opportunity. And I hope to get more information about this, uh, and, uh, and be able to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pritzker?
I just wanted to say that I have a professional obligation when a settlement is proposed by a party in a legal case, to bring that matter in confidence to the decision-maker. Um, now, uh, I know that, uh, Ms. Dinkin, uh, when we met recently, uh, was informed of some general parameters to the degree that I could, uh, express them. Uh, but I have worked with these people for 10 years on this issue, and I have lived underneath, I grew up under this flight path for 14 years. So I'm very aware of, uh, the concerns of these residents, um, and, um, I, I could just say that, uh, I have, um, had to keep this matter in confidence because of my legal obligations as a lawyer to this council.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Councilman Wax.
First, I'm going to move that we continue it for, say, three weeks to give the affected communities a chance to meet and discuss and meet with Mr. Pritzker, meet with the council members, Mr. Ferraro's office, others, and, uh, and Mr. Fuhrer and others that have been really involved. I mean, I'm just looking at this on first glance because I actually saw it only this morning. I know my staff got it late yesterday, and I didn't get it till this morning. And there are some things in here that are, that are, that are very good just on first glance. Uh, the, the, the willingness of the, the Airport Authority to finally do a traffic study and, and traffic mitigation efforts, and us being involved with it, the, something Mr. Patterson has been asking for, for a long time on the, studying the, uh, adequacy and accuracy of the noise monitoring stations, but who's going to pay for it? Who's going to do it? How's it going to be done? All the things that one would have to answer in that, um, at least I don't know of them. Some things are, 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 are very weak, that they've either already been agreed to or they don't provide the kind of, uh, protections, uh, particularly, for example, assurances on easterly takeoffs that, that, uh, we've been asking for. Some things give up our authority, uh, the whole issue of deciding, uh, even particularly non-airport-related uses on the property in Los Angeles is something that should be governed by, I think, our zoning codes and, and planning codes. There, there's some good in this, some bad in this. The point of this is, Mr. Pritzker, I hope you learn from this that the process is just as, is as important in substance. This has been a repeated problem, and this is not necessarily your problem, but it has been a repeated problem in this council over the years of, 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 of process that is intended to be public, that involves the public, but being done in private. It would, this would be like, this would be like dealing with the expansion of, of LAX in an executive session to solve a lawsuit as opposed to the kind of, uh, look what Mrs. Glanter has, uh, gone, gone through on that. We have been discussing this, when Mr. Patterson first started doing this, he had a full head of hair, I remember, and now he's bald. They have been involved that long in it. So to somehow come to a settlement without even telling them about it and without involving them, and i, is just, i, is, is, is just inexcusable. And what it does is it makes people very skeptical right away. You, you, you now start in a much more difficult position, um, Keith, than I think you would have had you involve them all along, and this, and, and we come to some kind of a, a consensus-making. That said, this is an important issue. A lot of people have invested a lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of people are impacted by this. And I think that the only thing we could really do today is to continue this for three weeks, to give the communities of interest, and there are so many others that aren't here today that I, this is just with less than 24 hours' notice. Um, I don't know who got notified and who didn't, but the thing is, is that this now will, will open up the issue of discussion, and I'm sure Burbank's going to want to be involved too. There're going to be people there, they're going to be involved, but they can't not be involved either. I mean, these are the kinds of things you simply can't do privately. This is the public's business. It's got to be done in public, and it's got to involve the public. So I'm moved for a three-week hearing, a three-week continuance to give an opportunity for the council offices and the city attorney, an opportunity to meet with the varied groups and the communities, and give them opportunities to meet with whoever they feel they need to meet with and provide input, and then we can see where we, we go from there. But it's imperative that there, the public be involved in this at every step of the way.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. There is a motion to continue. Mr. Fuhrer and Mr. Holden, both you have, uh, your buttons pushed to speak. Do you wish to speak at this time or wait till we speak on it at the contingents?
Please briefly.
Okay. The Chair recognizes Mr. Fuhrer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I say-
I seconded Mr. Wax's motion because I do believe that there are benefits in having a broader array of interests represented in the discussion, but I have a couple of questions, Keith, about the specifics of what's before us now. And they might frame some issues that I want to pursue myself in between now and then next time we discuss this. Tell me more about the provision regarding the acquisition of the 22 acres of land. As you pointed out, that is a linchpin to the agreement. Were the city to, in any manner, fail to allow that acquisition to occur, then the balance of whatever benefits are presented, presented here go away, correct?
Correct.
Why would the city, well, first of all, tell me what the city's interest would be in selling versus not, or allowing the acquisition versus disallowing the acquisition of that property?
Well, they're going, obviously, they're going to need some additional parking in the vicinity of where they want to put the new terminal. The location where they would like to put this additional parking is on property that's located in the city of Los Angeles. If, if they're unable to do that, then they will find other nearby property in the city of Burbank for doing so.
The current use to which that land is put is?
I, I don't know the, the current use. I think it's in industrial use.
Yeah, there are all those warehouses and other aviation-related uses in the vicinity of the airport on L.A. land. There's some, there's some retail there and some other things. But does our, and this is leading me to where I also want to explore a little bit, does our allowing the, that land is in the city of Los Angeles, some of it is owned by the city or none of it is owned by the city?
I don't believe any of it is owned by the city.
All right. What, what happens if there is an unwilling private seller of part of that land? Does this agreement obligate the city to exercise eminent domain?
No, no. In fact, when the Airport Authority, Burbank Airport Authority was established, it denied that authority, the ability to use eminent domain powers to expand the airport.
On what basis would the city be in a position to either facilitate or reject a, sell, a sale of private land to Burbank? Would it be on environmental grounds perhaps? Would there be sequoia issues involved? Would there be those kinds of hearings required? And are we obligating ourselves at the outset to support something, the effects of which have yet to be assessed?
I, I don't think, believe that we are. The PUC section says that the local community, the local jurisdiction, the governmental jurisdiction of the city has to approve that land use. I, I believe that the, that this particular site was considered for parking as part of their original proposal back in 1990 and that was part of the challenge that we brought.
All right. Well, we're not going to be able to finish this analysis today, but these are some of the things regarding that provision in the agreement that give me pause and I want to, I think, explore further. The other issues, of course, I mean, on the one hand, as Joel's pointed out, participating in the traffic mitigation study is a good thing and being involved in assessing the efficacy of the, and the adequacy of the noise assessment tools at the airport, those are good things. Are not the balance of the, elements of this proposal, things that would happen irrespective of whether the agreement is struck or not?
I, I don't, don't think that's the case. It is true now with the 161, it would not be true with the 150, with the Part 150, which is the runway utilization plan.
All right. Okay, we'll talk some more.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Fuhrer. The chair recognizes Councilman Holden.
Van Nuys Airport. Will this airport with a new terminal possibly generate more noise in the LA area than we're getting at the Van Nuys? Was that some of you, the things you had to think through before you came up with this agreement?
I did not in my mind think about a comparison between the noise generated by Burbank Airport versus Van Nuys Airport. As you know, there are no commercial flights in and out of Van Nuys Airport. So it's a little difficult to draw a comparison.
Well, they're commercial, but not by regular airlines. I mean, you have these chartered.
Right. And then they have a lot of helicopters that fly out of Van Nuys, as you know.
Which is basically nauseous.
It, it certainly seems that way to a lot of regular.
Various hours in the morning and at night, whereas you're closing the Burbank Airport at certain times, but the Van Nuys Airport, four, five o'clock in the morning, they're out there. 11:12 o'clock at night, they're out there.
When we talk about.
And that's what some of the complaints have been. And I raise this question because some of the, the council members here today have to discuss that issue with the same kind of importance as they do the Burbank Lindell Airport. Or they can make a big deal out of what's before us today and turn their backs on, in a way, to some extent, of what we're doing in our own city and then negative noise that we're generating in our own community. So then what is this all about? Well, we need a referendum on every agreement that you come up with, then we ought to do that. I think it makes no sense at all. You have an agreement? Put it before the people, let the people vote it up or down, like they try to do some of these other deals that they make, which they don't finally do, but it would be, would not be a bad idea. I'd like to see the referendum. But they're not doing that here. They haven't done it before. But if you're going to do that, fine, let's do that or take the authority away from the city attorney to negotiate lawsuits and settlements and agreements. If we don't like what's in it, then we just have you go back to the drawing board and ask for something else. That happens all the time. But did you negotiate this in the dark or was any member of the council able to discuss with you their point of view on this issue? And anytime you brought it to us before, I know.
Yes, well, there were, as I mentioned, last January, I met with five council deputies that had expressed concern about these issues and informed them of the general parameters of the discussions that had been taking place.
Right. Was one of those deputies, Mr. Wax?
Yes.
Staff? Then he knew it should have known, then we're being discussed before we came today, is that correct?
Yes.
Once told us what you came to in the agreement with, Ms. Keith.
Well, it's used up my time.
Till we called you down the office yesterday and said, what are you doing?
I put, I put a banana in his ear and then he got up on my time. I'm sorry about that. Okay, well, if you're going to continue, but to what benefit would it be to continue? Would we lose the deal?
Well, we'll have to see what the, what the court says on Monday. I, I would expect that if we tell the court that we are discussing settlement and the matter will be coming back shortly before the city council, that the court will indulge us.
You can't say that to the court because you're discussing whether, you're going to have a debate in the community under, that's what you're discussing.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Based on Mr. Wax's motion. And the court's going to throw you out.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. There's a motion to continue this item three weeks and without objection, that will be the order. Okay, well, Mr. Holden is objecting, so Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on the continuance for three weeks and tabulate the vote?
Nine ayes, one no.
Ah, democracy marches on. The item is continued. Next.
This is the time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
Okay, now, prior to us doing that, we do have item number two on the special agenda, which had not been dispensed with yet, and we are going to continue without objection, item number two on the special council agenda until Tuesday.
City legislative analyst or the city attorney is to, there is a request to continue item two on the special agenda. It's okay? All right.
Okay. So without objection, that will be the order. So we'll adjourn the special council meeting and now we will go into public comment for the regular council meeting. Here we go. Unique Joshua, Richard Robinson, and Tut Haze.
Hi, my name is Unique Joshua. I attend Manuel Arts High School and I'm also a member with the L.A. Youth Action Coalition. And I would like to take this time to thank you for letting me be here. And I would also like to take this time to thank the city council of Los Angeles because they have been a very supportive, they have been very supportive of the efforts of L.A. Youth at Work. And we would like to thank, we would like to thank you for all of your help. Thank you. But we want, but we want you to know, we are trying to make a difference and help your people get work, help our, help our young teenagers get jobs in the city. Our coalition is trying to get the word, the word out to youth in our communities about job opportunities. We are having, this weekend, we are having a fundraiser walkathon and we were, we are, we are all getting up this Saturday at 6:30 in the morning to meet down here at First and Hope to walk three miles in a walkathon. And I am here today to ask you for your support and to ask you if you would like to donate some money to be a sponsor for our young childrens. Because we need, we need sponsors to sponsor our young children in the walkathon. And if you can, you can make them, if you would like to write a check, you can make the check out to L.A. Youth at Work. Or if you would like to have cash, I will be here a little while after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Munchkin. Mr. President members, human spirit is not of the dust of this world. This is the King James Version of the Bible, sir. In it, St. Matthew 634. It says plainly, it admonishes us. Don't worry about tomorrow, for tomorrow will worry about the things of itself. The Los Angeles Police Department is besieged. When I was a child, the book that Norman Vincent Peale wrote, The Power of Positive Thinking, I carried around in my back pocket on the campus of the University of Michigan for years in the 60s, my birthplace. This consent decree, I feel, I was reading Cindy's article in The Times last night as I was watching Star Trek, and I think Mark's correct. God is on your side. This consent decree, decree, pardon the Freudian slip, is a necessity. Thank you.
Mr. Haze?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. On Tuesday, you'll be considering an ordinance to penalize public urination. You might be aware of a movie called Field of Dreams where it was often quoted, "If you build it, they will come." So you built two restrooms in this building. On the first floor and on the second floor, there are two public restrooms. They've been closed for more than a year. You also put two restrooms in the lobby of the Central Police Station. They're always out of order, consequently, they're all closed. Remarkably, government has not fulfilled this responsibility in this area by allowing people to simply accommodate public restrooms even in this facility. I know you realize without, in good conscience, you cannot penalize an activity that you will not accommodate. You cannot penalize an activity that you simply will not allow to occur here. And I understand that in this building, homeless people do use the restrooms on the first and second floor. For that reason, you've closed them. The restrooms that are on these sidewalks that LSA has put out, there are 26 porta-potties. They're not unsanitary, they are illegal. They have no urinal, they have no tissue, they have no lids on the stools. Send some accommodating staffers to go out there and do a dirty job that someone must do and simply inspect it. The county health department would take them off the street. Now, were it not for the fact, there'd be nothing there at all. So, unlighted the fact that LSA has proposed to put $250,000 European-designed restrooms at MTA facilities, let's not be absurd. When the, when the Democratic, Democrats come here, there will be thousands of young people who will not go to hotels, motels, or other accommodations, who'll be looking for a way in which to accommodate their natural needs. So be mindful that if you do get porta-potties, we need to go beyond that and design a porta-potty that can, that can endure the kind of traffic and vandalism that will occur, meaning we have to design something entirely new and something better. I can assure you that I believe that you will not go forward with the notion to penalize urination or even defecation because you recognize that you failed miserably in your obligation to provide these accommodations for people. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Haze. Madam Clerk, is there anything else before?
Motion's for posting and referral.
Without objection, so ordered.
You have an excuse on the desk, Councilmember Chick, request to be excused for city business to arrive at 20, excuse me, to arrive at 11:00 a.m. on June 23rd.
Without objection, not a problem.
That clears the desk.
Adjourning motions, colleagues? Adjourning motions. Councilman Pacheco?
I have a moment. Well, I'm going to have to wing it, but it's not going to be that difficult. I want to adjourn, obviously, in memory of one of our leaders in the Latino community who passed away yesterday. Here we go. I want to adjourn in memory of Tito Puente. His full name is Ernesto Antonio Puente Jr. He passed away of a heart problem. He was born in Harlem, in New York City, on April 23rd, 1923. As many of you know, he was famed not only as a musician, but someone who brought everyone into the Latino culture. One of his most famous songs was not only famous for him, but famous for Carlos Santana, which was Oye Como Va, a song he wrote in 1949. Many of you may have heard it in the 1960s or 70s when Carlos Santana made it popular. He was 77 years old. For over 60 years, he was a percussionist, a composer, a bandleader. He recorded more than 100 albums in the six decades in the music industry. He was known as El Rey, which basically means the king. He was the king of Latin jazz. He won five Grammys. He was a National Medal of Arts winner, which was awarded to him by President Bill Clinton in 1977, 1997. He was also honored as a living legend by the Library of Congress this past April. And of course, as you know, with some of these groundbreaking artists, they did pave the way for many of the artists who we now enjoy in entertainment field, who bring us music that has Aladdin, Aladdin flavor. So I adjourn in memory of.
All members, thank you, Councilman. Any other adjourning motions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll. Seeing no further business before the council, the council is adjourned. Have a good day.